Yes.
I heard people out there talking.
And on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. Come on down. You're the next contestant. Hi, come on in. Don't be shy. Hey, nice to see you again.
My Costco buddy is here. Hi, how are you? We ran into each other in the Costco and you didn't know each other.
Isn't that funny? I talk about that, how we go, you see around town and you don't see people and then you run into them and like Salem, Portland, Eugene. Hi, welcome.
David, what were you gonna do?
You can sit right here. Oh, yes. Okay. There. And then what's your name?
Ellie.
Yes.
Hey, well, we're happy to have you. What's meant by that, you can leave. Whenever she, whenever she gives you the sign. Good to have you. All right, we are reconvening now officially from our executive session. On the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dustin. Second, Arnie, thank you. Discussion. All right, I have some discussion. There was, there was some, at least in the copies that I had, it looked like one of the dates for the meeting minutes was 2022. And I, I almost said, I'm not gonna even do it because Adrian's gonna get it. There was, there was, there was a couple of them, actually. So look at the meeting minutes for the last one and then on the 27th. The 27th and then the 13th is 2022. And then you had me down as board vice chair. Who had devoted, which was, which was fine.
Notice what she caught, just maybe.
Yeah, so at the signature portion. On the 27th.
Oh, yeah.
I did, I was, oh, I'm not gonna say anything because Adrian's gonna get it.
No, I missed them. I just go back and forth without correcting those, especially for the whole minor grammar.
I know. It's still, it's still making me real proud that I saw it. Okay, any other discussion? Let's all vote. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Okay. Moving along, public input. Do we have any public input?
Let me see if there's any others that signed up.
Okay. Well, David is looking at the public input statement or signed up list. I will read the statement. Sign up for public input, email or call the board secretary at 541-267-1310 or davenc@cliffay.k12.or.us. Your deadline to sign up for public input is 12:00 PM, the day of the meeting, and the time is limited to three minutes. Those signed up will be given a telephone access code to the meeting. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs, but the board will not hear personal complaints concerning school personnel nor against any person connected with the school system. The board chair will direct the visitor to the appropriate means for board consideration and disposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals. Board policy, BDDH. Who's up?
We have Keith and Frandopoulos.
Hello, welcome.
Okay, well, you've heard my name. It's Keith Frandopoulos. I'm 13 years old. I'm in eighth grade and I go to Marshfield Junior High. It's a great school. Almost all the teachers know the new curriculum and work with it really well. Um, and all of the after-school clubs that I've been to are really fun for me. But my main complaints about it um, are the punishment curriculums with hate speech, because I hear a lot of it. Um, and every time it's kind of just a slap on the wrist and then you're good to go. It feels like the punishments never really advance for the kids who do it all the time, so they just don't stop. And the other complaint I have, um, are the preferred, are the thing for the preferred names. Because like, if you're trans, like I am, like my legal, my legal name is Zoe, but I go by Keith. Um, then you can write your name down and they're supposed to put that on your official forms for school, so that's what teachers call you. Um, I gave them my preferred name at the beginning of the first semester. They didn't get it in until the second semester and even then, none of the, none of the teachers, um, or coworkers that are calling me by my preferred name unless I told them myself about it. Um, those are really my only complaints, so.
Well, Keith, thank you so much for coming up here and talking to us. And, you know, we want you to have a successful school year and feel safe and welcomed at your schools. And so it's our priority to make sure that that happens and our superintendent will be following up. And thank you. I mean, I know that this is really hard and I commend you for being so brave in coming up here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Items for information. So up instead of Carly Campbell, today we have a substitute with high school update, Ellie Delgado.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ella Delgado. I'm the president at Marshall High School. Um, as many of you know, this last weekend, Marshall wrapped up our winner sports with the girls' basketball tournament. They placed fifth and up in Forest Grove. Along with that, two MHS wrestlers placed at the state championship. Jonathan Calvert, a senior, placed fourth, and Marina Ballisbliss placed fourth place. And she is the first female wrestler to place at state at Marshall High School history. Um, state swim results include, there were eight individual swimmers who made it to state. Those who moved on to finals included the boys' medley relay. They placed fifth. This relay includes Clinton Kloster, a sophomore, Trevor Robbins, a senior, Jack Waddington, a senior, and Marcus Cleaver, a senior. Allison Wright, a sophomore, placed in, placed second in the 100 fly. And Marcus Cleaver, a senior, placed five, placed fourth in the 500 free. Jack Waddington, also a senior, placed fourth in the 100 breast. And the boys' relay, again with the same participants, placed fourth in the 403 relay. In speech and debate, two members qualified for nationals this last weekend. C.C. Visser qualified for program and interpretation and Junior Barrera placed for HI. Nationals will take place in Phoenix, Arizona in mid-June. The Marshfield Equestrian Team placed first out of 20 teams in the last two meets and they have one meet before state. Marshfield Choir has a concert in the auditorium on Thursday at 7:00 PM.
This Thursday?
Yes. Uh, last weekend, the jazz band had an opportunity to perform at the Clambake Festival and they did wonderfully. On Thursday, we'll wish off the upbeats to, with a pep assembly where they will perform both their state routines as well as drill down. They will compete at the OSAA State Tournament in Salem this Friday. And leading on to the spring sports. Um, today, the varsity baseball team plays their first game away at, against Newport. And the boys' varsity golf team played against Glenco Junction City, Newport, and Sweet Home at the Van and Trails Golf Course. Later this week, girls' golf will compete in their first tournament. Varsity and JV softball will play their first games home against Brookings Harbor as well as JV baseball. Val Hoyle is attending Marshfield this Wednesday to meet and discuss with students and staff her job as Oregon's United States representative in Heritage Hall starting at 10:00 AM. In the next month or so, students, specifically juniors, will be studying and participating in the pre-ACT, SAT, and ASVAB tests. Junior state testing will begin during spring break. Um, on Thursday, the MHS charity program is hosting a movie night in the main gym at 6:30. ASB has been working extra hard this school year to revise some of the, some of the traditions that we have forgotten about during the pandemic and bringing back the spirit and involvement that flows through Marshfield. Some find exciting new things we are looking forward to bringing back and planning come April include Earth Week, Fun on the Field, more pep assemblies, and of course, prom. April is definitely a stressful, jam-packed time for high school students and staff. With scholarships, finals, graduation, AP tests, and so much more, it's our job as ASB to remind kids that although it doesn't seem like it all the time, school is a place that they can enjoy themselves and have fun. Thank you.
Wow. I love that. Thank you. Do you have any questions from the board? All right, thank you so much. All right, Key Club Out of State Traveler Request, Rachel Lyon. Oh.
Um, good evening, board members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Harper Thompson. I currently serve as Lieutenant Governor of Division 76, Pacific Mark West District of Key Club International. Tonight, we are asking approval to attend the 2023 PNW District Convention, also known as DECON, from March 30th to April 2nd, so during the spring break. DECON is an event where thousands of key lovers across the PNW, along with members from the Key Club International Council, gather together to celebrate the end of a service year, along with the election and swearing in of the new district board. My incoming lieutenant governor Percy Miller and 68 other incoming lieutenant governors will be sworn in at this event. Um, the event is in Seattle, Washington. The current district board will be staying at the Hyatt and the event will take place across the street at the downtown Seattle Convention Center. Um, Percy and I are planning to take the Amtrak from Eugene to Seattle. District chaperones will escort us then to the hotel. Oh, my gosh, what I did. Um, I lost my place, so sorry. District chaperones will escort us from the hotel, or to the hotel, to the convention center. Funding for our registration and transportation was split between our local Bay Area Quanis Club. Budget allotted to me as lieutenant governor. Um, and the last part was funded by our club, which was approved about a month ago from our delegate board. Um, I'd like, we'd like to apologize for the late request for approval as we have a very new board and advisor and we were unaware of the out-of-state board approval, and now we know for the future. Um, and I'm free for any questions, but that's it. Thank you.
It sounds like you guys are gonna have a lot of fun.
We are. We have just over 2,000 people registered right now, so I'm really excited.
And take them to train there. That's really nice because you can just sit in those little carts and don't take it longer from Eugene to Seattle because.
Gets rough after all.
It gets rough. Meet you for multiple days.
Yeah.
Just saying. But you guys are gonna have a great time. We have this slated down later in our agenda to approve under action items. And I believe David said that you were gonna let Rachel know or Harper know. Yes, Arnie?
Having been a Key Club advisor many years ago, um, the district stuff is really, really important and we haven't had a lot of people go to that. It's rare that we have a governor or whatever. And I appreciate that you've been involved that much.
Thank you. I'm the first lieutenant governor from our division in five years. So it was definitely kind of starting from ground zero again to try to build a position, but we did a pretty good one, so. So thank you.
Yeah, have a great time.
I will.
I know, and I, I wish we could discuss it in our meeting and we just put it down. Give a little bit to the, right now. Okay, so let's call for a motion. Do I hear a motion on the floor to approve this?
I'm making a motion to approve the state travel for Key Club.
Nice.
I will second that.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, let's, yeah, send pictures. Okay, let's take a vote. Dusty?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Have fun and stay safe. Great. And one last thing off our action item list. And we have Jamie Faraday for Millicoma Marsh Trail Update.
And I need to speak into this thing for the people online.
Yeah, and is it on actually, or?
I think what it's put in, it doesn't need a.
Okay.
I don't think it blows.
Welcome, David. It's been a while since you've been here.
Time I was here, I got your approval to seek a grant from the Oregon Parks Rec Department, recreational trails program. And that's a program that helps with either non-motorized and motorized trails in Oregon from federal funds. And it's a reimbursement grant, so the district is on the line for the money. That is going to be a $192, $190,000 project. We're asking for 138. And I just gave this presentation. If you ask for more than $50,000 from OPRD, you must do a in-person or online presentation. And this is the presentation I gave them just this last Thursday. And they were to vote that day, and so I should be hearing soon. I was hoping I would hear today, but I will definitely let you know. So this is sort of a recap of when the trail was produced or created in 1991 with a federal grant to access the salt marsh that was where I wanted to get students engaged, because we, even though we live in the, on the bay, we can get to the ocean anytime we want to take a.
Don't point it my way.
Don't point it your way.
No, don't. You point it my way.
You point it, okay.
Point it that way, but talk into that because I just point it from me online. It's super harsh to hear.
Uh, anyway, this is, we might recognize this as.
It's super hard to hear you with your online if you're not in front of that mic.
Okay.
But you can carry it around with you. There you go. There you go. I love it.
Okay. Um, so as you know, this, is this? Laser.
Yeah, you gotta point at this.
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the laser pointer, but it's not working.
I don't think that works.
Okay. This is the Millicoma Marsh Trail. Uh, when people think of the Millicoma Marsh Trail, they think of this thing.
Right.
All the way around, um, yeah, and back, which is a little over a mile. The Millicoma Marsh Trail per se is, is just, uh, under a half mile. And it was just enough time to get a classroom out there and back. And we, we had the property line that used to go straight across here redrawn. And we got a little bit of portland, uh, in the deal and follows levees rather than a arbitrary line. So we knew where we were when we were out there with classes. There we go. And this was the, the ultimate place to go if you were taking classes, because you could look at, we had to cross what were dredge foils or are dredge foils. This is what it looked like in, in 42. You could on a high tide canoe up to where the, the lower parking lot is or the football field. But this has all been filled in with dredge materials from, uh, bay shipping activity. So there's the, one of the graphics from the, the, the then interpretive trail signs. This is what we looked at when we were starting to build the place. And with the, the grant, um, we were able to hire a contractor to, uh, fill in that space from one levee down to the other, down to the salt marsh. And you remember Wayne Young? He, he was very much into the, the process. And we, we needed to put in parking, uh, for this, this site, for the trail, for the public. And so we decided we'd mimic a wetland and be able to have something that let water sink in and actually produced oxygen with the grass that grew there. And this is what it looked like in, uh, around 91. Not many trees out there. And the gazebo was, was built just before the trail was put in. We had community input with, uh, local, uh, service clubs to help with the, the process. A local graphic artist did the signs. And of course, we got right to work with the students. Here's a, some of the partners that we have started to build relationships with. The three people there, one represents Corps of Engineers who's doing the survey for the readjustment of the property line. The person in the middle is with South Slough who have a very good relationship all through, well, the school district has a very good relationship with them. And the third person is Audubon Society. And they, they actually, um, funneled money from the Corps of Engineers to our, our district to help with the Millicoma Marsh expenses because the school district doesn't have a budget for the Millicoma Marsh Trail. And, um, we, of course, helped with student education, not only the school students at the middle school, but we'd also mentor, um, elementary school students with our students. And teacher training was important. That's been going on since the trail was, was produced just because education outdoors or environmental ed is, um, one of the best ways to, to learn basically anything if you know how to do it. And in 2000, since I figured that I'm not gonna be there, um, the whole time, came up with the help of South Slough, we produced a management plan that has four goals. One is habitat. This is, I don't know if you recognize this plant, that's purple loosestrife. We were able to control that when it started. Because this is a, this area, being a dredge bowl area, is like wiping the slate clean as far as an ecosystem. And so it's, it's been, um, succeeding through its different stages and the invasive plants came in and we had to figure out how to deal with them. The next and most important part is education, recreation. Access is important because we made this accessible. If you drive down there and you had a disability, you could walk all the way or wheeled all the way to the salt marsh. And of course, community support. Um, we've been building community support ever since it was put in and it's been strong. 2018 was up there because we, uh, one of the last times I was here, we revised it a bit. And we're just looking into doing some more teacher training when COVID hit. But these are some of the things that happened between 2018 and the present. Uh, we rebuilt some, uh, the roofs of the shelters, uh, with Coos Watershed, AmeriCorps, and community volunteers. Tree planting happened with, uh, the, uh, there's Sonia McMack in there with her classroom with Coos Watershed. Some graveling, uh, more invasive plant removal with Coos Watershed. And then a, um, a family moved back to town to take over, um, something that their grandfather, his grandfather used to have, uh, Bob Angel Construction. And this fellow, um, showed up and said, do you need any help? And I said, sure, we need this area widened because of blackberries and the, the willow were starting to encroach on the pathway. So they generated their, they donated their two days and their machinery to do that. And then we got a, a grant during early part of COVID, um, with Coos Art Museum to, um, help with the, uh, replacement of the interpretive signs. And instead of having a, a regular sign type, uh, elements, we came up with, um, planting these poles along the way that the students did some, um, printing on with the marsh plants. And then, um, these tiles wrapped around each of these posts at various places along the trail to interpret the natural and cultural. We had the input, lots of input from the, uh, Confederated Tribes. Um, and then, of course, teacher training. Um, here's some of the, the tribe's materials for that. South Slough and, and, uh, Coos Watershed were there to help with the training. Which is very important. And continue on to, uh, planting native shrubs from Coos Watershed. Every five years, we do a, a survey and make sure that we understand what the, um, trail is used for, um, who uses it, when. You can see that, uh, my, my generation is, is well represented here, um, but we're hoping to get more. And of course, this doesn't include, uh, the, the school children. And also, we, we want to find out who's interested in volunteering for what. And the likes, uh, you can see what the, the likes of why people come there and the dislikes. And we're working on this one. Uh, we've increased the amount of, of participation in using compostable dog bags on the site, and that's, uh, compliments of the Audubon Society. So now we're, this is where we're, um, we are now trying to get funds to restore the original Millicoma Marsh Trail, bring an inner trail called the Swallow Loop Trail up to accessible standards, which is a closer loop that, that will get the teachers out and back quicker. And they can look at the freshwater system and at times they can go out to the, the salt marsh and connect them with an accessible trail around the field and restore the, and enlarge the lower parking uh, and the drive down, which is in, in poor repair right now, uh, so that, um, there'll be a van accessible, be better, better surfaced. And add some maintenance, um, equipment to the, the shed down there for the volunteers to, to help with that. All the maintenance that happens. So here's the, the Millicoma Marsh Trail and the, the Swallow Loop Trail, and then the connector, and then the increased, um, parking area. And you can see that the, the trail, uh, is, has been grown in and does need some, uh, and the, the material will be gravel, very well compacted gravel that is, that is crowned and, and properly sloped. And the lower parking lot needs to be redone. And there's our, uh, the kiosk that's been upgraded and, uh, shows the, um, community efforts and some of the school, uh, classroom efforts as, as well. And we get about 20, uh, users a day and that includes about 20 or 50 users a day and that includes 20 dogs per day. But mostly it gets this, this use. There you are, Brian. Um, and this is just some shots of the, uh, Millicoma Marsh Trail, and this is the Swallow Loop Trail that needs to be regraded and, uh, brought up to, to snuff. Fingers crossed.
Yes.
Any questions?
Beautiful. I want to go for a walk.
Next time you get.
I've been, um, he's offered to give me a tour many times.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for the weather to. But I am. Um, I'm waiting for the weather to, but I am really looking forward to it. It's gorgeous.
We have the extra umbrellas.
Just found a canoe out there and around and coming from the other direction. That's also fun. Are, are, are extremely large rodents still a problem out there?
R U Ss are still a thing.
Yeah, that's really frustrating.
R U S.
R O U S is, that's, that's a reference to Princess Bride's rodents of unusual size.
Yes.
Thank you so much. It looks like so much work has been done over the years. I think I saw some pictures of some friends back in 1991 over there standing with their high tops and high socks. But this, the marsh has been so giving and beautiful for our community. My kids and family love walking it.
Yeah. It is, um, a labor of love for them. And it's been impressive, Jamie, to see you stay with this and to continually keep going out for grants and all the kinds of things you've done to make sure that goes on. I hope we find that person at some time in the future. But the marsh is always going to be there. And so we might as well take care of it and use it all those times. But it's, uh,
Didn't mention that part of the management plan has a stewardship group and I'm the, the adopter, uh, as, as per plan. Uh, but it's made up of, of two district employees. One is at Millicom, but the other was, it was Sonia, but she's now at a distant spot, but doesn't matter. And then South Slough and another agency, O F W and, uh, two or three community members. So we keep, we keep the communications open. And there are some that, there's former students that comes and helps with some of the stuff that I do.
Right. Thank you. Our featured school, we have two featured schools. Destination Kayla Crook and Millicom Mary Roberts.
Okay. So good evening. I'm Kayla Crook, the Alternative Education Administrator for the District. This is my first year in the position, um, and it's been a pretty great year of just learning and growing with all of our programs. Tonight I'm going to highlight K eight, the K eight online program, Resource Link and Destinations.
Or intuitive.
It's a little slow.
Go away.
Oh, okay. Um, so our K eight online program currently is serving 46 students. Our K five teachers, Sarah Crawford. And our six through eight teachers are Bruce Brent, Marian Castillo, Jonathan Foster and Joelle and Biddicker. They're all wonderful teachers and, um, it's great to have an alternative option for the, uh, to in-person education. These programs are providing individualized curriculum through Accelerate for K five and Hesiodity for six through eight. Um, there is also supplemental, uh, materials that the teachers do based on student needs. We're striving to work as a team with parents to provide the best support for the students and to become learning partners with them. What, I'm just going to highlight, maybe, here we go. Um, our K five program, um, is integrating art, science and physical education into curriculum on Fridays. And as you can see in that picture, art's kind of that favorite. Um, the students enjoy sharing their art and talking about the processes they use to create it. They're pretty cute. So, um, Resource Link, just a brief overview. Um, it serves 44 of our K 12 students. Leslie Trailer is our lead teacher. Um, she's out there. Teaching grades nine through 12. Uh, Leslie's been with the district for 25 years and has been with Resource Link since it was invented in 2003. Um, we're in our 21st year of meeting the needs of our community's homeschool and non-traditional learners in our community. Richard Hinkle is, um, our elementary teacher. He engages students in the nine grade, nine different grade levels through weekly parental consultations and customized education plans. And these ongoing relationships set the foundation for engagement in the high school level. We also have Les Willett. He's our seven, 12 licensed math instructor. Um, Les has been in Kuz Bay School District for a very long time. 1978 to 2014, he retired and then came back to teach math with Resource Link for the last eight years. And then we love our Resource, um, Link Board. Those, those members are Sue Walver, John Barton, uh, Donna Penny and Debbie Smith. Um, we're going to just highlight some of the cool things that the high school program is doing, uh, this year. Okay. So, um, first off, um, that picture that you saw before was, um, a group of students who are working with Master Chef O'Neil at Restaurant O as part of the, um, Family and Consumer Studies curriculum. Uh, March 15th this week, uh, the students will be completing a red cross for state CPR classes part of the health curriculum. And then they're also getting ready for Shakespeare Festival. Um, so they're going to see Romeo and Juliet and spend some time on the Southern Oregon campus. We will also be graduating 10 of the 11 fourth and fifth year seniors this year. Um, the one that's not graduating is unfortunately dealing with some, um, illnesses. So we're going to give them a little more time.
You know what? You just go ahead and click. I'll just listen for it.
Okay. So, um, um, so Destinations is serving 46 ninth through 12 graders currently. Um, these students are primarily working at their own pace, um, with teachers working in small groups or individually with students. That is a picture of one of my students, Carlito, finishing up one of his classes. He was pretty excited about it and those taco bill cords. Um, so, um, they have the opportunity to take some hands-on electives this year. We've included business math, history of rock and roll, journalism, psychology, um, physical education and literature in film, as well as a series of novel studies. Um, seniors are also required to take a senior seminar. And in that senior seminar, they are working with Recruit Hippo, um, to look at job opportunities and certification. And that meets their career-related learning standards. Oh, um, pretty proud of the kids, um, first semester awards. Um, we had 22 students out of 43 at the end of semester one who made it onto our academic award lists. Students completed over 272 courses equating to 136 credits earned. Uh, many of the students got pretty caught up this last term, so I'm really proud of them. So, um, for this year, we have 20 seniors in our graduating class. Five students have already completed all of their graduation requirements. We have 11 students on track for graduation and four that we are working with all the time. So trying to get them on track. For the class of 2024, um, we have 12 students and four of those students are on track to graduate early this year or take college classes next year through us. Um, and SWAC. So we're working on that plan. Um, and around four of them are at risk and we're working on plans with those students to recover credit. Think, oh yeah, there we go. Um, students were able to visit SWAC last week for a tour and to learn more about our local community college. Um, we also got some cap, cap and gowns in, so kids were trying them on. And the other picture on the end is one of our seniors who completed his credits. And so we showered him with a confetti cannon, so, um, which was fun. Um, and his mom was there, so it was really fun. Nope, that one. Oh yeah, yeah. He's a fun one. So we've been working on school culture this year. Um, we have conversations with students daily about the, what they want from their school and how they can contribute to make these things happen. The pictures here are from Spirit Week, which was organized by the Student Leadership Group. We had dress up days, um, and they did popcorn on Hollywood, Hollywood Day, cotton candy. You can see that there, um, uh, neon day and hot chocolate and cookies on pajama day. And, um, then they organized an assembly and wanted to recognize students who were doing really well. So that's what our, one of our students of the month. And at our school, we believe that school culture also includes service and having an attitude of service. So, um, these students, the first picture is the Watershed Program, uh, we'll highlight that later. Um, they are replanting native plants of the Kuz History Museum in that picture. Um, the center picture, um, my students volunteered to make all of the icing, like 35 tubs for the Madison Annual Gingerbread House Building Project. So did that for elementary. Um, and then they have also been developing their service and completing projects around that school itself. They've been helping set up the space for the after-school program, assisting teachers and setting up classrooms at the beginning of the year, um, building furniture as it comes in, um, and painting. Um, one of my students right now is in the middle of a project of, um, setting up our room for our teen parents so that they're able to come into school and have a space for them and their babies. So it's almost done, um, but it's beautiful. Okay. So one major change to Destinations this year has been an introduction of project seminar on Fridays, um, which goes back to the service. Um, this began as an effort to help students find a way to connect to school and provide opportunities to volunteer. Um, students were able to choose one project to work on throughout the year. This, um, first project is the Watership Project, which, um, we partner with the, the community. Um, Alexa Carlton is the outreach coordinator and works with our students. And then Barbara Green here is helping to develop this program. And you want to go ahead and speak a little bit about what you've been doing?
Yeah. So this last, um, fall, I approached Kayla and Watershed has been a thing that's been in destinations ongoing for years. Um, but with COVID, it kind of had like slipped through the cracks and then with the change of administration. Um, and I know Alexa really well. And so I said, hey Kayla, and do you want to do this? Plus I'm going to school to be a science teacher. So, um, I would really like to do this. But then, uh, my position has changed. So Sonia Novak is actually who goes down there now. Uh, we have, um, done different service things throughout the, um, school year. We've also done the SWAC. We are planning on taking them up to go see a restoration project up at Warehouser because they have a partnership with Warehouser. Um, the whole goal of this particular class is to help students understand what it is that we do and how it affects our ecosystem and how to be good stewards within our community and our land that we currently have. Um, so that's what we're doing and it's been really fun and I enjoy it. Um, and I'm slightly sad that I'm not as involved as I previously was, but, um, it's still very exciting.
Do you like Millicom Marsh?
Yeah. Where's the Watershed went on there? That makes sense. I am so allergic to mosquitoes that I stay away from there. Um, I get very, I get huge welts all over my body if I get bit. And so I tend to not go over.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, we have a rock hounding group. Um, they're working on geology standards and learning about rock formation and classifications. And that McFadden and Michael Laney head up this project. Um, they went out to Bullard's Beach a couple of weeks ago and tomorrow they actually get to pull rocks that they found out of the rock tumbler and see what they're, what's going on with those. And, um, so we're excited to see that. The next project seminar we have is kindness through art. Um, this stemmed from kids wanting to do art, but also wanting to impact community. So, um, the first thing that they really did was decorating the doors for the fall for Spirit Week. They did really, really well, um, on those. I was really impressed. And they've been making bookmarks and they're going down to the library and putting them in random books in the library for people to find and just kind of smile and, um, and then they recently created like 52 Valentines to send out to our bus drivers, um, for Valentines. That's one of them right there. So, um, it's pretty, pretty cool little group. And then we have a diversity and inclusion group that's, um, a partnership with the REN. Um, Bree Landrum is developing this program and volunteers her time on Fridays to meet with these students. The intent of this group is to provide a safe space where students could explore and ask questions about diversity and equity. This year they focused on self-identity and reflection of self, their social identities, um, their conscious and unconscious biases, um, microaggressions, and exploring the cultures that make up our communities and our schools. And, um, this class right now, um, is moving towards their culminating project, which I'm really excited to see. They also participated in a training this fall around teamwork and inclusion, which you can see with the tarps that they were having a lot of fun with. We are looking forward to some other, um, projects, the culminating service projects at the end of the year, as well as some field trips coming up. Um, we are going to be taking the students to the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Um, this is to supplement their environmental science and biology courses. Uh, they have another beach trip this week and, um, we are planning, uh, steam trip. So, um, really science, engineering and the arts is what we're looking at. We're looking to possibly be spending the night in Portland. I think my teachers are a little bit crazy on that one, but I think it'll be fun. So, um, we also want to invite all of you to the Resource Link and Destinations graduation happening Thursday, June 8th at 7:00 PM. We'll be tentatively be holding ceremony at Marshall on foreign and we're working on that. Um, and so the last thing I'll leave you with is a quote from one of my students when I asked him about motivation. And he said, a little progress each day adds up to big results, um, which I agree with completely. Um, so at this time, do you guys have any questions?
What time? Did you say that was June 8th at?
Seven.
Seven.
I was going to ask the, the online students, um, are, are there any common reasons why those kiddos are doing online classes?
There, there's a lot of students. We're seeing a lot of students with anxiety or behavioral issues, um, asking to move online. So that's what we're seeing majority.
I would tell you, when you go to the Oregon Coast Aquarium, um, if you get talked to them ahead of time, they're the only place in Oregon where we can recover sea turtles and others and get up here and get cold. And so they have a whole section for rehabilitating, uh, sea animals, uh, getting them back into the wild. And it's really kind of cool if they get, if they'll give you a behind the scenes tour.
That would be amazing.
And if I can help anybody, let me know because I became pretty good friends with them. We gave them a lot of money to upgrade their place. So they've been, uh, very, very kind at different times. But it's a, it's an amazing place and, um, it, it has been interesting to watch them save some turtles that get washed along and all of a sudden they're really cold because they don't like the water up here. They like the water where they came from, but they can't get out without help. So it's kind of cool. And your kids would like to see the people saving little critters.
They would. That's always fun. Alt Ed is so important and having these groups. Not all students feel like they belong in traditional settings for various reasons, whether it's bullying, whether it's anxiety, stress, family situations, whatnot. And it's important, uh, we talked about this earlier, that all students feel accepted, wanted and welcomed. And so I'm grateful that we have so many different options for our kiddos and their families. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mary. All right. See how you do with the clicker.
Fire away. All right. Uh, thanks for having me tonight. Before I start, I just wanted to introduce a couple of Millicom staff members, a few that are here. First of all, Kevin Gutting, our assistant principal, uh, fresh off a yawn from, uh, finishing, uh, the long basketball weekend and starting tennis today. Fresh off a yawn from finishing a long basketball weekend and starting tennis today. And then we have Carla Delgado, who teaches third grade for us, and Brian Hutchins in the back, who also teaches third grade. So for kind enough to join us tonight. Thank you. I'm gonna talk a little bit tonight about kind of the things that we brought back from COVID, pre-COVID. And then just a little bit about what we've got going on. But I want to focus mostly tonight on the cool things that we're doing now that we haven't done since prior to COVID. So so we brought back some everyday practices that we haven't done. Before school, students now have options. They can go outside, they can go to the cafeteria and get breakfast, they can go to the gym. This morning, a lot were in the gym, not very many outside. And we've got our music room open three days a week when Mr. Mings for students before school. I'm just trying to give them options. Our library is open, but a lot more movement to start the school day. We brought back kind of open lunch seating, so kids can sit where they want, now that we don't have to cohort our lunchroom. We brought back our walk to read, march to math. So we're using our intervention programs to help support our most striving learners and give them the most opportunities. And we've increased our physical education. During COVID, we had one class, one class per slot of time, and now we have two classes per slot. So that's helped out a bunch. We have a P E teacher, Mr. Banks. He's been there for quite a while. And we also have a P E assistant, Mr. Salter. So we've increased our physical education activities for kids. Most of our kids get four days a week of P E. So a lot of physical activity. We've also brought back some enrichment activities. So we've had a few field trips. Fourth graders went to the Plank House Museum. Fifth graders went to the South Slough and did the tour. And then our third and fourth grade did the Coos History Museum.
Maybe just four.
Just four. What, the third grade, you guys? Not yet. Okay. So we've had quite a few field trips. We've had to reteach behaviors on field trips, and it's gone fairly well. We have, we are in week two of swimming lessons over at the pool. We decided to wait for some snow and some cold weather and lots of rain to start swimming lessons. Now, I know Carla's class has done swimming lessons and it went pretty well. A lot of tired kiddos last week, but it's been a good experience. Mr. Banks and Mr. Salter, along with a couple of folks at the pool, are teaching the swimming lessons this year. And it's been fun to see kids excited. We have a lot of parents that have reached out to us thanking us for bringing back swimming lessons because some of their kids have gone two and a half years with little to no swimming instruction. So that's been a real nice thing for us. We will be bringing back outdoor school in May. We're going to be going down towards Ashland this year for outdoor school. We have been up Camp Gray near Newport, but we decided to go inland a little bit, get away from the coast. A lot of our kids were getting construction on coastal type things that they see here, local. So we wanted to get more. I'm going to go to, I believe, Lake of the Woods is the name of the facility. We brought back our Mustang Pride group, which is kind of our student leadership. It's a volunteer group. Students of any grade level can join. Devin Davis, our counselor, oversees that program. Oregon Battle of the Books, we had that last year, but we brought it back. But we advanced it this year a little bit more, more opportunities for families to come and watch the events, more opportunities for kids. We have, I believe it's close to fifty students that are participating in the Battle of the Books. Our fifth grade team placed second in the district competition and are hoping, I think they got their wild card to go to the next event. So pretty excited about that. And then Mr. Harper's brought back our robotics club. And we're working on continuing to advance that. We've been purchasing more and more robots, kits, more and more Lego kits, too. So it's been a really cool deal. We've got a lot of kids doing robotics between our third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade this year. So we're pretty excited about that. It included some photos of our, kind of from going from left to right, top to bottom. We've got our swimming lessons. We've got students eating in the cafeteria. Got Mr. Harper there in kind of the middle picture with the robotics club at a meet earlier this year.
Is there an area in the background?
What's that?
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah, it is area in the background. Yeah. And we didn't Photoshop. He was really there. Because it kind of looks like he's almost photoshopped. He's not. He was actually in attendance. And then in the bottom, going from left to right, we have a group of students that toured the History Museum, a picture of Obob in the middle, and then another photo of our kiddos in the cafeteria enjoying lunch. So it's been a really great thing to be back in those environments. Awkward pause. Oh, no, I've got one more over here on my, oh, whoops. There we go. Excuse me. We've also brought back some special events, assemblies. We had Reptile Man come in this year, which is a little scary when you got it. He was awesome. But when he's asking kids if they want to hold a king cobra, and I'm sitting here thinking of everything that could go wrong in this situation. Nothing did. Everything was wonderful. But that was exciting for kids. Our kids did a great job. They were super happy to see all these snakes and critters. Clambake Music Fest was in on Wednesday and performed for our students. It was a little raucous, I guess is the right word. Some guitarists up in the crowd a little bit. Lot of, lot of oldie songs by Gino and the Lone Gunmen, but they were, they were great. Kids had a good time. We had a Veterans Day Assembly earlier this year. Our monthly P I S assemblies are back. We were doing those during COVID through Google Meet, so I could record everything, take pictures of all the kids, record it, put it into a presentation, and then send it out. And we'd watch it. But now we're back doing it live and in person in the in the gym. We're gonna have OMTI coming in May to do a presentation for the students. And then I also want to just talk about, we brought back some of our holiday, or excuse me, some of our evening activities. We have our holiday music program. We've had some dances for sixth grade, which I have a video that I will show you in a while of our last sixth grade dance. Mustang Madness, which is a positive behavior event. We had an evening Mustang Madness last month. The teachers came in during the evening and ran different stations. We have about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty for the fourth and fifth graders, and we had over two hundred and fifty attend that night. More than we thought we would have, but it was awesome. Kids had a great time. Mr. Hutchins and Mr. Hire ran the karaoke room. It was a lot of fun for students. And then we brought back my teacher night this year. Earlier in the, in the fall, the teachers worked over at McDonald's. Earned a little money for the classrooms, but it was a lot of fun to have the kids come in and order food from staff and get to visit and things of that nature. I included some photos of our music program, our fire prevention assembly, and then the bottom picture is our veterans assembly that we had. We had probably fifty veterans come in, right about there. It's hard to tell because they also brought spouses and families and things like that. But it was a really great deal for us. Some pictures we've got from, again, top to bottom, left to right, we've got the first two are our staff working in my teacher night. There's Mr. Hutchins in the middle, working the drive-through. Picture on the right is Erica Homan. She's a fifth grade teacher for us, and she is either holding the crocodile or the alligator. I held the crocodile. It was much more aggressive than the alligator. On the bottom, we have Lisa Holmes is working in our special education room. And this was at Mustang Madness that night. She ran an art room at Mustang Madness. And then we have one of our students there holding one of the constricting snakes. Nobody was constricted in the event. It was, but there were quite a few some rattlesnakes and quite a few vipers and turtles and things like that. More pictures. Top left is myself handing out a certificate for a student at our Positive Behavior Assembly for our principals award. We have students that represent a positive behavior trait. They have pizza with me a couple of days before the assembly, and then they get an award at the assembly. We invite families to join us for the pizza or the assembly. Ms. Davis in the middle handing out some positive behavior recognition. Top right is Ms. Broder, third grade teacher. She's doing a dance, it used to be Dance Revolution, but I think it's called Just Dance now at our Evening Mustang Madness. On the bottom left, that's our sixth grade dance committee for our last dance. It was a spring themed St. Patrick's Dance, as you're probably hoping, as you look at the picture, that it's a St. Patrick's Dance. A lot of costumes, a lot of outfits. And then in the bottom right, we have our Clambake Performance. Before David jumps to the next slide, the next slide's a video. I hope it works okay. I hope you can hear it. We had a dance last week. And the, I was in the cafeteria with some students. And then I didn't hear the song that came on, but the cafeteria cleared and instantly just cleared out. And I got really nervous because when a cafeteria clears out at a night dance, you're not really sure what's going on in the other room. So I walk into the gym and our sixth graders, almost all of the eighty-plus sixth graders, seventy-five to eighty percent of our sixth graders attended, were on the bleachers standing, and this was what was going on. So hopefully you can hear it. So the theme of the dance was the village people are a timeless and will live forever. But it was, it was really awesome to see these kids back doing something that brings a smile on their face, something that was special for them. And it was really fun for the adults. The adults enjoyed it. Dusty, you chaperoned those dances, I kind of call them. They're a real hoot. So so it was fun. So I want to talk about those things. And then real quickly, I've just got a couple more slides. Want to talk a little bit about some school data. I know you guys have heard a ton from the K sixes so far this year about reading and reading supports and reading data. But I want to talk a little bit about Mila Coma and some of the things that are positives that we've had go on and happen. Last year, on the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two state report part, Mila Coma actually scored higher on the E L A test than the state average. I know it's not where we want to be. But in a, in a time when we're coming off COVID, we're kind of looking for positives where we can and things that we can build off of. So that is something that as a staff, we're, we're proud of, but we also know that we have a lot of work to do. Also, in both the math and the E L A exam, the assessment, we scored a level four in minimizing the learning loss from COVID. Usually, they call it the improvement or the change score. They kind of adjusted it last year to talk about COVID learning loss. And we scored a level four, which means that we you know, level five is the highest score you can get. So we scored a level four on minimizing that learning loss during COVID. So it's something that we're, again, something that we're proud of, but we also know that we've got, we got a ways to go. Talking about some reading support changes, again, you guys have heard this from the other K six building principals, but so I'm not going to spend a ton of time on it tonight, but we have really focused on that shift with science of reading, you know, the initiatives that were started by the K two principals before COVID and it's kind of spread into the three, six buildings are starting to come to fruition and starting to pay off for us. At Mila Coma, we've adjusted our intervention blocks. This year, we went back to our walk to read model. We've added some additional intervention blocks for our most striving learners. And we've been using data to drive our M T S S process, our student services process to help with identification for special education and things of that nature. And then we've kind of figured out that we're going to continue with, with our new Amplify program. We're going to continually kind of make adjustments on the fly and learn from the positives that we see in our data and then also learn from the not-so positives that we're seeing in our data in areas of need to strengthen. Earlier this, back in January, we had a reading data night. Arnie was able to attend. That's the first of its kind that we've done live with the principal of Mila Coma. And that's something that we're going to continue. We talked to parents about the assessments we're doing, how we're doing the assessments. We showed them videos of the assessments. And then how we gather our data and what we're using the data to do within our building. So we had about eighteen families there, and we look at it as something to build off of moving forward. Next year, kind of our focus, did I skip a slide? No. Next year, as our, kind of our focus, we're going to look at continuing to improve our Amplify instruction. We also want to add additional math supports for our most striving math students in our building. We also want to focus on some social emotional and attendance, attendance support. So adding some additional celli supports for our social emotional learning program, whether that's a curriculum or maybe restructuring some staffing to provide some more supports for students. We're not seeing, I don't think we're seeing a great deal more of behavioral and social emotional issues. I think what we're seeing is more intense issue, it's more intense needs for some of our students. I don't think we're seeing a huge growth in the number of students, but the students that we have that need supports need more intensive supports. And then we're gonna, we need to do stuff to improve our attendance and within our building. Attendance rates took a dip during COVID, as everybody's aware, during the year when we were doing a lot of quarantine and things like that. They've rebounded, but not rebounded enough. And I think we need to make that a priority. And then we want to increase our family connections next year. We're going to do the reading data night in the fall after our initial assessments to show parents where we're at. And then we're going to do it again after end of the year assessments to show them our gains and what we've, what we've what we've ended the year. We're going to adapt for reading and math next year. And we want to bring back some events like pictures with parents goodies with grownups and things like that that we did prior to COVID that we have gone away from. We're trying to figure out a way that we can get all the grownups that do a building or the grownups that would like to attend goodies with grownups when we have four hundred and eighty-ish students. So when we used to do the event prior to COVID, we called it Muffins for Moms and Donuts for Dads. And Dusty, again, you probably remember if you guys have attended back then, we would have two hundred, three hundred people in the gym prior to school. So so we know we have our work cut out trying to plan that, but we're gonna make that an effort next year. Any questions? All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now on to our one of our two favorite unions, O S E A Business, Barbara Green.
And Terry. And Terry. So we have had a busy last couple of weeks. This last week, last Monday, not like a week ago, right? We went up for LED Day up in Salem where we talked with Boomer Right and Senator Dick Anderson about some of the bills and that are coming out. We also talked to them about increasing, hopefully, to ten point three billion for education funds for the state of Oregon to hopefully sustain where we are currently with staffing and things like that. There's also a bill for special education within that package that I don't completely understand.
It's a bill that would give a stipend for people that are working with students where there's issues of bodily harm and so forth. How they would actually, I it's a nice idea. And with any bills, it's going to go through a lot of amendments and so forth. They were talking about, well, if you're with them twenty-five percent of the time. And right there, that's when it gets complicated. So I agree, we do need, you know, we want to make sure we have quality people in those positions. So something does need to be done to, to make it incentivized to, to do that and to protect them. So that is one of the bills we were speaking on. Just cause for all. Just cause for all, but it's kind of one of those aren't you supposed to speak more about that? A hodgepodge. Where it is, it would give every education employee just cause in their contract. Our contracts in Crewe Public Schools have that, but not every district does. This would give all education employees just cause, but they're kind of throwing other things into that. And so that's And so that's, we're, we're just keeping an eye on it. So Just Cause is great. Um, and, and some of the things they're throwing and tagging on sound good, but I don't want it to, you don't want things to get too muddy so that it doesn't pass. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And so there were two other ones. Um, the equal access to unemployment benefits. So currently um, during the summertime, education assistants are not able to file for unemployment. But um, there are other classifications such as bus drivers and food services that are able to. So this bill would give equal access to all of those who are um, employed through education, the ability to file for unemployment during the summertime so that uh, jobs don't need to be picked up in the summertime or have second jobs. It, it kind of gives them that extra funding. And then the other one is representation on boards and commission. Currently, right now classified staff are not a part of those conversations. So by being able to have the, be at the table and talk, um, no plan without us, but there was like a little catchphrase, right? Um, makes sense to be able to be a part of those conversations and we make up a huge portion of education across the board. So being at the table helps be able to figure out what we should be able to do. Um, and so that's what we talked about at LED day. Um, it was super exciting. It's the first time I've ever been. Um, and Bree Landrum also went with us and it was a joy and I would, I would love to go back. Um, so some of the other things that we've been doing is we had a membership. Do you have more to talk about?
No, I do know that Lisa and I are both keeping an eye. It's kind of got drawn at us. Wasn't something we talked about when we were there, but I got an update on Saturday and that is Senate Bill eight nineteen, which will, and so we are just, we're watching that. I'm sure everybody in education is. We want to make sure that, you know, that our employees are also protected. So however that goes out, it, it hit so fast that we didn't have anybody there to speak on it, which is unfortunate. Usually we try to always have our members tell their stories when bills affect their lives. So we're just going to keep, keep our fingers crossed and watch it and uh, see what happens. Eight nineteen is the bill that um, would make mandatory, um, you couldn't do abbreviated dates. So for special ed students for students on a five oh four plan. So um, we're just kind of keeping an eye on that one. And, and many others as it seems to change day to day, so.
And so this last weekend, we uh, did a membership drive painting event. Um, and I think it went okay. It, there could have been more, but uh, you can go sit down. Standing there.
But my painting beat Drew's.
For painting beat Drew's. Uh, so there was a, a small group of us that got together. Um, and we were able to paint jellyfishes at Josie's Art Lab. Um, we are trying to get information about the union to the different classified within our district. Um, we sit at about seventy percent right now, membership. Um, so we are trying to increase that slightly. Um, there's a lot of benefits that come from being in the union uh, for people. And then I also want to say a big thank you to all of you and our administrative staff and our teachers this last week. We felt immensely loved and appreciated by every single one of you. Uh, so thank you so much for that. There were goodies all week long and every single bit, and I don't necessarily belong to any of them in particular, but anytime I would show up to one, they'd be like, hey, there's food in here. Please go eat it. So it was really nice to be appreciated. So thank you. And do any of you guys have questions?
I snuck into your office. I had somebody unlock the door and I snuck in there.
Why?
Last week on Friday. You work up. You just have that little desk there.
Yeah.
And I was just went over there creeping to give you your gift.
Oh, thank you.
Surprise. It's just me.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now our other favorite union, CBEA Business Becky.
Becky, let me know if you can name me.
Oh, she's right there. Oh.
Alright.
Oh, are you doing it or is she doing it?
No, she had a little message written up. I'll call her. I'd be here because I want to be here, but.
Okay, who's, who's on?
She's online.
She's online.
Well, she's connected.
You're muted Becky.
I see her face.
I see your beautiful face. Absolutely.
Well, she asked if I would read it, so I will.
Oh, okay.
Um, going back through emails. So this is for Becky. As you all know, CBEA has been kept busy lately with bargaining of a new contract. Our next session is scheduled for Tuesday, three twenty-one. We appreciate the support of our members and look forward to seeing everyone next week. Additionally, we recently held elections and happy to announce that Jeremy Berger and Becky Crane will be switching places on the CBEA board effective August first. Jeremy will be the president and Becky will mentor from the vice president position. Congratulations and a big thank you for stepping up here.
Yay. Congratulations to both of you.
Alright, nothing else? No questions? Or David? Alright, moving on to superintendent update.
Well, I'm so impressed with all the things to update. I get to strike out so many of these things, which is great because I know we have a packed agenda. Um, uh, first of all, I just want to note the classified appreciation week. We, it was fun last week to get out and express appreciation for people that we truly are grateful for all the great work that goes on. In particular, last week I went on a four hour bus ride. Um, I went on Route eleven, um, the longest bus route. Um, I want to give a shout out to my new bestie, Kami Davis, bus driver. Um, she's amazing. That is the longest route and I wanted to see, um, I wanted to experience a bus ride from our longest route. We went way up river. We went on single lane log trucking roads with no turnouts or lips. Or like just helping me understand the road conditions, what we send those very large school buses on very narrow roads, helping to much better inform um, my four AM decision making around hazardous weather today's and seeing the roads that, that we have our, I had no idea a bus could go up those roads. Um, but just most inspiring, the kids were amazing. Some of our students are on the bus an hour and a half, one way, twice a day. And they were a wonderful, and the bus driver, I mean, but the relationship, she's driving the bus and responsible for the behavior and care of all the children at the same time. She, the relationship she had, she knew not only every child, their name, their need, their dream. She knew their families. She knew the names of their goats and their cows and their horses, like the depth of relationships. So I just want to give a shout out to, I mean, bus drivers, they have their own union, but they're up for negotiations coming up. So I know they'll be negotiating with first student and then that trickles to us, so that will come up. But um, super proud and super impressed and um, it was quite a four hour adventure. Um, there are no restrooms on, available on that four hours. I mean, just things you don't even think about. Um, it's fascinating. Anyway, it was, so I really enjoyed um, last week and getting out in buildings and I want to thank the board for going out and helping distribute our little thank you gifts for everyone. And I appreciate the team effort.
Were you on the Coos River side or were you on the Allegheny side? That's the question.
The Coos River side.
So you saw my.
Those were your goats. Your goats. Everyone, I saw fish, fish hatchery. It was gorgeous. It's beautiful.
I had one on the bus on accident.
No, on purpose, I wanted to experience, we have a close relationship and I know I hear from Adam all the time about issues and experiences with the bus. So I wanted to experience it myself. So I'm like, don't give me the short one. I want to see longest route that our kiddos have. And it was um, it was real, I learned so much. It's so beautiful out there. I need to go out hiking and exploring out there more. It was gorgeous. Alright, so um, update on bargaining, um, Dave had touched on it and his Becky's update. Just wanted to give you a heads up. We have met five times so far, sixth time coming up next Tuesday, as they mentioned. So far, we have um, discussed all of the articles that both sides have opened except for Article eighteen. And next Tuesday, we will be discussing Article eighteen, which is professional compensation. So that is going to obviously be a pretty weighty conversation. Um, my hope, it's been pretty slow, six meetings just to get talking through each. I'm hoping once we have that conversation around compensation, um, and that it, we will pick up pace in reaching an agreement. I feel confident we will. I have really appreciated though, learning and listening. I've been doing so much listening um, of the conversations. Um, really listening to our licensed staff about their needs, their concerns and their priorities. So um, I think I, it's been a really great learning opportunity. I think we've been very civil. And um, I've just appreciated everyone's commitment to the process and um, really being respectful and sharing really powerful um, stories and information. So it's been good. I'm hoping it will now maybe pick up the pace a little, a little bit. Um, so we can uh, hopefully very soon uh, get a successful resolution. Um, I also wanted to give an update on something, the bearer of tough news. Um, uh, last year, the district for the uh, first time in I don't know how many years, did not apply for the Indian Education Grant. It's a federal Indian Education Grant Program. Um, the deadline for applying again for next year was last week. And we've been working on it and talking about it for months and I wanted to give you an update and I have Lisa DeSalvio here who can ask with more, answer more details, but I wanted to give you an update. We work closely with our tribal partners. In particular, the Quoquel tribe has been really partnering with us around this. Um, and we decided not to apply again this year and I wanted to give you the rationale. Um, so that the community and the board understands why we did not um, apply for the grant this year. Um, what's happened um, over the past two years is that the Indian Education Grant um, requirements are requiring um, to be eligible to participate. So not only the funding, but even for a student to be involved in the service, they have to provide a five oh six form. And on this, this is a federal form, uh, you know, that's required, this federal form requires a tribal affiliation number, number. It's an official number. Many of our students' families do not have that tribal affiliation number. And we've had a lot of conversations. There are a lot of reasons that some of our native families do not feel comfortable registering to get this tribal affiliation number. Um, and so at this point, we have um, two hundred and ninety-eight students in the district who identify as American Indian or American natives. Only eighty-two are eligible. Um, and the, the bureaucratic burden on tribes to provide alternative documentation around this is a really big burden on the tribes. So working closely with the tribes, um, that requirement along with the parent committee must consist of at least fifty percent of the parents on the parent committee have to be one of those, some of those eighty-two students. So it puts this extra burden on a much smaller group of families. It really hard to try and struggling putting that time burden on the families. Um, working with the tribes, they, the words that we heard from them, families are feeling stretched for time to, to have that participation limit. So um, each eligible student, for our eighty-two eligible students, we would have been eligible for twenty thousand dollars of one hundred, twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is not even adequate for a half-time position to support the work. So it's this tremendous bar to reach for a very small pot of money. Um, and the final piece that didn't meet kind of our equity lens, I've already hinted at it, is that only those eighty-two students could receive any of the services. So the other two hundred and ten students who identify as American Indian or American native could not participate in any of those activities. Um, whereas our tribal assistance, um, what is that tribal assistance, no tribal attendance, promising practices grants is much, it all students, all of the two hundred and ninety-eight students who identify, they don't have to, you know, supply this federal form and designation. They are all eligible for the services, much more inclusive, much less of a bureaucratic burden. So um, we are leaving the twenty thousand dollars on the table, not because we don't want to, but because um, it, it just, there wasn't any, there wasn't the F, the people didn't want to go through the effort and the imposed burden it's going to put on families and the tribes in order to get the small amount of money. That being said, uh, we did talk about, we think um, Coos Bay, we have the largest number of um, AI and American Indian, American native students, that twenty thousand dollars. Uh, working with, uh, through the South Coast ESD, the Educated Service Districts and the other nine superintendents in the region, they have even smaller pots of money that they're eligible for. And we are going to, um, I'm going to present at um, one of our regional superintendents meeting and see if the ESD might be willing to lead a consortium. Because we think if all of our districts in the region go in and apply as a consortium, that that money combined would be enough to support some staff and to support some real opportu- cultural and educational opportunities for all of the American Indian, American native students. But they would only be the ones eligible, only eighty-two of ours, but at least we think the power in numbers, they might be able to have a more rich, robust offering than what we're able. So I know this is a long explanation because it's hard. We want to serve all of our students. We don't want to leave any money we're eligible for to meet um, our students' needs, but we've met many times. We've had a lot of conversations. Um, we've really looked at it and that was the conclusion we came to for this year. Any questions about that? I have Lisa, I know Lisa's sitting here. She can, did I miss anything Lisa?
No, I think a part of the problem is, is those, those tribal numbers, a lot of the students that we had previously, a lot of them are graduated and kind of fell off over the last couple of years of COVID. Um, those tribal numbers are, have to be the student themselves, their parent or their grandparent. So it has to be, so it can't be grandparents and grandparents. Um, a lot of, of the tribal members really are not comfortable giving those tribal numbers to be kept here with the district. Um, you know, some have said, well, we'll give it to you, Bree, because they trust Bree, but if you leave Bree, you have to destroy it. You know, it's kind of like, um, there's just not that trusted. So we, we've had a lot of discussion about it. We really thought hard to make the decision.
I think that was, you know, it's a lot of work for very little funds that could not.
And it's a lot of work. Yes, it's do, it's a lot of reporting, federal reporting too.
So we just wanted, I just wanted to say this out and be transparent with the decision and why. I know, you know, OSBA and the legislature, we've had some, why didn't Coos Bay apply for this money? I hope this, if people ask you, if we have made a thoughtful, there is a rationale. I do hope that maybe the federal government will um, consider loosening up some of their requirements to be more like the ODE tap grant requirements. Um, so we can serve more students that are, that should be receiving the services. Uh, anyway, so I wanted to give that update. Um,
Karen, before you continue, because I might forget, after you're done, we need to circle back. We missed Candace.
Oh, Candace, you, okay, I'll, I'll finish up really quickly and then we can go to Candace.
I wanted to get off there. Sorry, Candace.
Poor Candace. Um, just wanted to say uh, just a couple of upcoming events to invite you. Poor Candace. Just wanted to say, just a couple of upcoming events to invite you. We've already mentioned US Congresswoman, US Representative from Fourth District, Val Hoyle is coming to Marshfield on Wednesday. And Garrett King has been organizing this. He's invited the board if you all want to attend. It's a session with students, but it's at ten AM in Heritage Hall on Wednesday. The, another event that I'd like to invite you all to, the Kus Bay School District is sponsoring one of the co-sponsors of the South, Annual South Coast Diversity Conference. They're doing it in an interesting way, April twelfth and thirteenth at the Mill Casino. One day conference, two options for people. So as a co-sponsor, we can have twenty-five slots attend. Inviting the board, I would hope you let us know if any of you can attend. We are also inviting the Equity Advisory Committee from the district. We have fourteen members, including four students. And they, some of them were getting permission slips. I think Chad and I are going to be the chaperones to bring four students with us to the Mill, it's at the Mill Casino, the, the Diversity Conference. Be reaching out, depending on how many of those spots we have left, to the district's Diversity Equity and Inclusion group to see if some folks of the teachers there would like to come. We have some grant funds in Chad's department that we're, we're paying for this. So I hope you all will join. I'm going to be there on the Thursday, the thirteenth. If any of you want to go, Chad and I will be bringing some students. So I'm really looking forward to that. Kim will be there. Are you coming on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
There's food, right?
I think so, yes. And then just for this month, this month is National Reading Month. And I want to give a big shout out. I went to Read Across America today, a day at the Kus Bay Public Library last week. I went one evening and I did a reading and the Sunset Library picked out a book, the library, library gave me a book to read and it was wonderful. But I was most impressed, we had so many of our Marshfield High School students there. They were amazing, like Harper was there, I see him. We had the Marshfield Key Club, the Zonta Club, the Cheer Squad, the National Honor Society and the Latinx Club. We have a new Latinx Club that has seventeen members at Marshfield High School. They were, all of them had different activities set up. They're, and all the little kids were just in awe, they cool teenagers. And it was just a, there were so many people there. It was, the library was packed. Everyone was celebrating books and reading. And it absolutely warmed the cockles of my heart. It was a wonderful event. So I want to thank all the students in particular. And I know it was a lot of work for the adults too, but just making it a really special event. So just wanted to thank that. And it's also Women's History Month. And I'm very proud to work in the district that we have a lot of female leadership. And we have a predominantly female staff and we, I just am very proud to be a part of this organization and celebrating all the accomplishments and contributions of all the amazing women we have here. So that's my
Candace, I'm so sorry. I'm used to you sitting here in the room. So you're up.
No, that's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, if I mute myself real quick, it's because I started sneezing and I couldn't stop. So I'll, I'll speed through this real quick here. Our Statement of Revenue is Expenditures Fund Balances. Our General Fund, February twenty-eighth, had an ending fund balance of twelve point seven million. I'm going to circle back to this number in a minute because it has some importance on the, the next report. Over to our Capital Projects Fund, it has an ending balance of eight point eight million. We have our retainage left owing to Scott Partney Construction for Madison, which leaves us about three million remaining in our bond funds. And we will actually start on Mila Coma over spring break. So that will eat up that balance pretty quickly. The next report, oh, was there a question? No, okay. The next report is our General Fund by Object. And one thing I wanted to point out is as of February twenty-eighth, we had twelve point two million encumbered for expenditures through June thirtieth. And as of February twenty-eighth, our general fund balance was twelve point seven. And the importance of this is we're going to start trying to calculate what we think our ending fund balance will be as of June. So we're going to be watching our encumbrances closely. We still have about six, roughly six million dollars to collect from the state school fund and a small amount of property taxes left to collect. Any, any questions on the financials?
We're good.
Okay, moving on to enrollment as of March eighth. Our enrollment for the district, March eighth, was three thousand twenty-seven. If you compare that to where we were in September, we're down a hundred and twenty students, but we're still greater than we were last June. So, so that is a good sign. Our February numbers, February sixth are the numbers that we used for our estimate of enrollment and revenue for next year. So that number has gone down a little bit, but I'm, I don't think that we need to resubmit at this point. I think we'll wait another month or so and see where our enrollment is next month. Any questions about enrollment?
Okay. Thank you, Candace.
You're welcome.
All right, Board Items, determine graduation speaker and attendees. And this also, I'm going to kind of merge the board member highlights because I did approach Dusty at, at our Madison Open House.
I did one two years ago, three years ago. And it was terrible, just for the record.
So put that on the record. It was terrible. What was that feel like?
He did one of two years. Yeah, well, yes, I do.
So who's able to attend graduation this year? Six, ten?
The tenth at seven PM.
Yeah, I think we can.
I will be there. Dusty, Dusty's out of here.
I will probably be there.
Oh, probably.
And upon, it's probably dependent upon my oldest more than anything.
Okay, so we have three for sure. And then we need to check out with our other board members.
So either one of them, we can appoint the speaker.
Well, we have a core.
Diane's been dying to do that.
I know, but I, you know what, Kevin's been silently. Yes, he did, didn't he?
Yeah, well, actually, I'm going to do next year.
Really? Because that's the year I wanted. That's my last child graduating.
I know, mine too.
I know, but I'm holding on to that.
I think it's great to have two people. So we won't need one this year because we have two next year.
I'm fine with doing it, but if, if we want to do it.
I'm, I would love to have a little people.
All right, sure.
Daisy.
All right, now we're busy. Okay.
Good to be the king.
Yes. So I talked a little bit about Madison School Open House that I went to with some fellow board members and a few of our other board members that have, were on the board in the past with us. Showed up, James Levine and Jill Christian, Christiana were, were there and that was really nice. And Carly Mobler came, who was the principal of Madison for fourteen years and was principal, well, I was, my, my children were there. So that was really nice. And the school is lovely and beautiful. And it's a great community.
We also had another former principal, Eli Anderson.
Oh yeah, you were there for what, fifteen years?
Was that?
How long were you there for? Two years. Okay, other board member highlights.
Today, I got to spend the day talking about being a senator and a house member and principal Marshville High School for Jason Goodson's classes, so all day long. It got more into three, three twenty in the afternoon. It was good. I had a good time. And they were great kids. Yeah.
Um, I was slinging fish and oysters at the three A basketball tournament. Well, two weeks ago-ish, with the same group of old men and women that have done it for decades. My father-in-law catches most of the fish that, that goes out the door. It is a tribute to the community's commitment to its kids, both in, at both districts. And just a marvelous thing to be a part of. Terry's library, if you haven't been, is wonderful, warm and welcoming. It's such a beautiful space. Just one, one of the many highlights of Madison for that event was great. Carly was a lovely host. And kudos to Forest Grove. We ran a nice for a tournament, for a basketball tournament this last weekend. So it's, it's it was lovely.
All right, I had the opportunity to go to the Benefit Piano Recital at Marshfield. Jeffrey Vargas, who's the accompanist for the choir, put on a recital to benefit the music program over at Marshfield. He has a really, really good rapport with the students there as well. There, there's quite a close-knit group. And so that was fun to hear. This past weekend, speaking of robotics, I actually have most of Mila Coma's robots in my possession right now, along with four Chromebooks. Helped with a, it was an outreach effort for the Marshfield Robotics Team. We did some programming practice over at the North Bend Public Library. And if you feel you might want to get involved in robotics, on April first, North Bend Public Library is hosting their HebeCon, which is a crappy robot building competition. So everybody is qualified for that. And it's kind of like a sumo contest. It's a lot of fun. And if you win, you get a nice crappy trophy that you must apologize for. Because that means that your robot was not as crappy as everybody else's. So if you're interested in that, you can look it up on the North Bend Public Library website.
For any age group?
All ages. Yes. And I believe the library has a few kits of parts that you can use to build robots if you're, I think they're giving those out to the kiddos. So.
One last thing for my highlights was visiting teacher Dan's classroom over at Destinations, the Blossom Gulch Building and getting to be in circle time with the kiddos while he's reading a book. And it just takes me back because he was my oldest head start teacher, preschool teacher way back when. And getting, getting him, seeing him in his groove again, it's so great. And the little ones ask the best questions. So.
He was a preschool teacher for, for both of my kiddos.
Was he? Yes. So, so fun. He's great.
Oh, I would also like to give a shout out to Kevin Guthrie, he's still there for holding my hand. My appreciation deliveries this last week. It was, it was great.
Okay, and our policy committee, we had our first readings. Oh, here it is. Here it is. I see it. I pulled it out. So we had first readings of BBBA Board Member Qualifications. And this, the revisions are made to better align with the criteria stated in statute and in Oregon Constitution to be an elector for a member of a school board. The CF Advisory Committees to the Board, at least one member of the Educational Equity Advisory Committee, needs to be appointed to the Budget Committee. And this would happen when a position becomes open. It does not establish an additional budget committee member. CVC Superintendent's Contract, with the Passage Bill of Senate Bill fifteen twenty-one in twenty twenty-two, there are now provisions in law to consider when issuing a superintendent's contract and when district school boards are making decisions related to operation of the district. This update reflects those changes. DBEA Budget Committee, similar to the revisions of Policy BCF. This policy was updated to include the provision that one member of the EAC, Equity Advisory Committee, needs to be appointed to the Budget Committee when a seat becomes vacant. I believe we've already done that, correct? No, no, we have not, but we have talked about it. Other changes included changing the date for identifying Budget Committee vacancies from July to August. A requirement was also added stating that the Budget Committee members must also be registered to vote in the district they serve. EFAAR, our local wellness program, that was just a delete. And EH, records and data management, this was another updated to better align with policy and administrative regulations. GCPA was a reduction or recall of licensed staff. And this one is House Bill two thousand and one, which is twenty twenty-one, change the laws regarding reductions in staff for teachers. This law also changed the definition of teacher to be used in the layoff process, now ORS three four two point one two zero. This change requires districts to consider cultural and or linguistic expertise when implementing a reduction in staff. This update states that the board shall direct the superintendent to prepare a reductions plan to identify which programs are to be reduced or eliminated for board approval. And GBA, Instructional Assistance, Policy DVA has been revised to reflect current language found in Oregon statute. IGAC, Religion in Schools. And this update revises the reference listed. And IGVBC, Talented Gifted Programs and Services. And that's just a delete of a policy. So that is the readings of our first policies or our first readings of policies. And turning, go to the next page, action items. We are up to action items. Okay, so our first action item to consider is approve adjustment to moving plan, keeping resource link at Milner Crest. That's it. Explain that.
Yeah, can I explain a little bit more? So previously, the board had approved the plan to temporarily relocate Mila Coma to Blossom Gulch next year and destinations here. And Resource Link also to Blossom Gulch. In reconsidering the plans, and I have even more recently, last week, I met with the Resource Link Board for the first time, gotten further input. What we are proposing is it hasn't happened yet. I just emailed Gary and Leslie about this today. Is keeping Resource Link here, so kind of reversing that. And I'll explain why this is important. But in it, so they would, Resource Link would be using the cafeteria downstairs for their high school programming. And they've requested if we can find an additional room for the elementary classroom at Blossom Gulch. And we believe that there will be enough room for Blossom Gulch to have the, the Resource Link elementary classroom there. So Gary and Leslie are going to meet and, and look at rooms. So Gary, you got my email today? So thank you. So, but for the reason we're doing this is because when we move a site, we have to, the board has to approve a school moving. And the board had approved the school moving and now we need to unapprove so that for ODE, when we're giving the official address of the school. And we just wanted to clean it up because the, when the board voted before, it would have moved the address to both Blossom Gulch. We just want to keep it as is. So this is kind of a undue vote for that particular. We just want to keep it as is, so this is kind of a undue vote for that particular, um, move.
So if I'm correct, Milner Crest is staying in this building, I mean, Milner Crest, Resource Link is in Milner Crest, except for, who would it be, Richard's?
Richard's classroom, yeah.
Classroom would be at Blossom Gulch.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
But this would still be the main address for all the programs.
Yes, but they would all move along, okay.
Yeah.
So, um, do I have, or hear a motion on that?
I will move that we keep Resource Link here.
All right, so moved.
One second.
Adrian, second, thank you, any discussion? All right, let's take a, we'll go, Dusty?
I.
Arnie?
Hi.
Adrian?
I.
And I, vote I. Motion carries. All right, next up is approve calendar adjustment to eliminate early release on the last day of school and make it paid and packing day from Millicoma.
So, um, as we just discussed, Millicoma will be moving, um, for one year over to, um, Blossom Gulch. And what we're doing, we're proposing that that last half day, that students not come and teachers get to, not just teachers, all staff in the building, including the principal. Um, everyone can use that day to pack. Um, because in our collective bargaining agreement with CBA, there are two, two days for packing, so this would be one of the days for packing. So, um, teachers would have a full paid day that day, um, to begin packing. So, um, yeah, so we're asking the board to.
Students still gonna have that seat time?
Yes, students, um, uh, we're currently, Gary, I think we're at about nine hundred and forty hours for elementary for that level, and it's a nine hundred minimum. Uh, not, we need to have at least nine hundred, we're at about chat, is it nine forty for, uh, Millicoma?
Nine, nine hundred.
No, I mean, what do they currently have?
Uh, it's, it's about nine forty minus some of the hours that we use for the weather.
Right, I was gonna subtract the weather days, so we're at nine forty, two weather days, a late start. That's sixteen, eighteen, two forty minus eighteen, this would be another four hours, twenty-two. So we're still eighteen hours above, so please no more weather days. For elementary, we're still eighteen hours above, about, for the, um, minimal administrative state instructional minutes requirement.
So if we approve this, then, and there happens to be other days, which we're hoping there's not, how does that work?
Well, uh, we are going to have to come back because already at the high school level, we're below the nine ninety requirements because of the weather days. So we are going to have to come back and ask, um, ask for board approval for allowances because they do provide for, um, professional development, for example, allowances. Um, so we're waiting until hopefully all this weather passes, and hopefully it'll warm up and we won't have any more hazardous weather days for when, so we know specifically how much we need to ask the board. So, um, I said April, someone said Karras, we've had bad weather in April before, wait till May. We'll probably, on the board agenda in May, we'll come back and ask for allowances. Right now, I think it's only going to be at the high school level, we'll need those allowances, not K through eight. Yes.
I just verified, it is nine hundred forty hours, not counting weather days.
Yeah. Okay, that's what we started the year at.
Right, right.
So we have forty hours at that level.
Okay.
Before we meet the state.
So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the calendar adjustments for early release on the last day of school, and then make it paid, uh, packing day.
All right, thank you, Dustin, thank you, Arnie, any discussion? Let's vote, Dusty?
I.
Arnie?
I.
Adrian?
I.
I vote I. Motion carries. And approve our three-year extension of Debbie Springsteen and Richard Jackson Osborne's term of, to the Budget Committee. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
I'll move that we expand three-year extensions to Debbie Springsteen and Richard Jackson Osborne to the term of the.
Thank you, Arnie.
Second.
Thank you, Dusty. Any discussion?
Um, so how does this, how does this affect the, I know we just went over the policy that's gonna change for having an Equity Advisory Committee member on our budget committee?
That policy's not passed yet.
Want to figure that out?
Till the next vacancy.
One could look at it two ways, we could ask an Equity Advisory Committee member to be a budget committee member, but there are state laws about the numbers. Conversely, we could ask a budget committee member, where the board has flexibility about membership, um, to serve on the Equity Advisory Committee. Then we would, because there isn't an opening to fill and add an Equity Advisory Committee, we might want to ask someone on the budget committee to serve on that equity advisory. Would be one suggestion.
And I, I know that Rick needed the schedule of meetings, I don't know how, it's already scheduled out or how to do the budget committee meetings.
Actually, I'll send them.
Okay. All right. Did we already vote on this? That was discussion, oh my gosh, okay.
I do relate you.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, Dusty?
I.
Arnie?
I.
Adrian?
I.
I vote I, and motion carries. Okay, and next up is adopt our Strategic and Integrated Guidance Plan.
Yes, so, it was like, am I supposed to talk about this one? No, um, even though I know you could, since you were a proud serving member of the Strategic Planning Work Group, as were several other people sitting in the audience. Um, we're here this evening at the last meet, uh, on February twenty-seventh, we had an in-depth work session, um, where we presented the full Strategic and Integrated Guidance Plan to the district, including the budget templates. Um, we're here, if you wanna, we can answer any more questions, or if you have any desired revisions. We've had two opportunities for public comments, um, in the interim. Um, and we need to, the board needs to approve a plan, whether it be the one we recommended to you or another plan, um, by March thirty-first, to meet the integrated guidance requirements from the Oregon Department of Education.
Right, so.
I have your chance to change the model.
Right, we did discuss in depth changing the, each student thrives to something else, and we get a little sticker to put over everything, but, uh, that was, that we were just joking about that. And so far as I know, that we did not, um, see any changes, maybe I might have threatened people since it was a long arduous journey to get to where we were with lots of people. But, um, with that, I would like to hear a motion if we have one.
All right, uh, I'll move that we adopt the Strategic Integrated Guidance.
All right, second. Thank you, Arnie, and any discussion?
I just like to make sure that people realize that any kind of strategic plan can be changed as time goes on. So, um, as we figure out what we want to do, we, we probably should, it needs to be a living document, so.
Yes, very, very bright. Living document, so it's nothing set in stone. And let's go to a vote, Dusty?
I.
Arnie?
I.
I.
I. Motion carries. And our next up is approve its superintendent's summative evaluation, which I will read. Uh, that was included.
Oh, wow.
Did we leave?
Yeah, that was a component of the integrated guidance.
Thank you, though. All right, so, uh, Coos Bay School Board Summary Evaluation for Superintendent Harris McGahey for the school year of twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. This year, we did an evaluation of Superintendent Dr. McGahey's annual evaluation on of performance based on the current job contract, uh, Superintendent Goals, Evidence of Performance, and eight evaluation component performance standards. Superintendent McGahey is new to our district, and we would like to acknowledge the challenges of relocating to a small rural community that has deep roots and strong established relationships. She began her year with individual meetings and an open door policy to support the development of relationships within the district and community. Dr. McGahey accepted the task that building relationships would be key to her success as superintendent. She is visible at school and community events and has extended invitations to community partners, staff, students, and parents, and conversations, planning, and development of the district goals, mission, vision, and values. The board would like to urge McGahey to continue building on the momentum that she has created by refocusing on nurturing, nurturing internal relationships within the district. This year, Superintendent McGahey has been faced with a number of situations that require expedited communication and thoughtful consideration. Trying to balance the fragile relationship between transparency and confidentiality while simultaneously building trust can feel like an insurmountable obstacle. Yet McGahey has risen to show the board that he's up for the task. The board appreciates her use of resources as well as her timeliness in keeping us informed. The newly developed Equity Advisory Committee shows that Dr. McGahey has a passion for inclusivity for students and families in our district. The board is impressed with her intentional alignment of the school with the requirements from ODE, the Oregon Department of Education, through forward thinking and early implementation. The continuation for professional learning built upon inclusivity and cultural humility will be crucial for providing safe and welcoming environments for each student. We are excited to see the strategic plan in action, as this will provide our map for staying on track, meeting goals, and assessing when course corrections are needed. The board recognizes that we need buy-in and ownership from staff in order to make the district go forward. Continue involving different voices, including staff, when making decisions for the district. Internal communication through various platforms, timely responses, and reflective supervisions are tools that will help strengthen relationships and build trust. In addition, addressing fiscal changes and learning more about the budgeting process and software will be necessary in order to communicate priorities to the board. As one of the board's primary responsibilities, having a strong, knowledgeable finance team is imperative for the success of the, the district's financial future. We look forward to the continued growth and development of Superintendent McGahey. She is a welcome addition to our community and an asset for Coos Bay School District, thank you. All right, with that read, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the superintendent's summary evaluation.
Thank you, Dusty, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Adrian, any discussion? All right, let's go do a vote, Dusty?
I.
Arnie?
I.
Adrian?
I.
And I, motion carries. We already did Key Club, and then we have Director Superintendent develop a reduction plan to be conducted in accordance with all collective bargaining agreements and Policy GCPA Reduction or Recall of Licensed Staff. And as you probably remember, just about ten minutes ago, I was reading the policy updates of that policy in its first reading. It was number seven. So, we have a motion to for Superintendent to develop that reduction plan.
I'll move that we, uh, insert the, to work on a, um, plan for, and, and you know, we've heard the last year and a half, two years, that we have a lot of one-time money, and we know that that's coming to an end, and we need to make sure that we are prepared for the future and work on our, our budgeting as we go. Uh, we need to get a plan in place, and we need to work with our staffs, uh, and our unions to make sure that we can move forward. And that's kind of what policies are all about, getting those people to work together, make that happen. I look forward to seeing the plan.
Did you get on that, Damon?
All the form.
There you go.
All right.
Also, you're right.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Um, so we have Candace McGowan, and she's online, has, um, we've worked together to put together, um, a spreadsheet to share with the board to understand kind of the scope and parameters around this plan. It's in the packet, but we thought maybe she might be able to share it, or at least walk you through it. Um, and so the community can also hear kind of the one-time funding, um, uh, issues that we're facing as a district. So Candace, I don't know if, are you there, can you, you fill out?
I am.
Okay, thank you. So it's this.
So the, the spreadsheet shows as of July one, beginning this school year, what we had remaining from ESER two and ESER three. So we started the school, this school year with eleven point six million. Below that total, you'll see the things that we either have earmarked or are currently spending out of that eleven point six million. And we highlighted in yellow, um, this school year, we are currently paying for sixteen point five licensed staff and two point oh classified staff. And the combination of those positions is about two million dollars. So once we pay for that this year, and all of the other things that we have earmarked, we will be ending this school year with about, uh, one point one of unencumbered monies in ESER. That's not enough to continue our current, um, staffing. That leaves us short about eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. So for next year, we need to perform a variety of things to end up saving eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, which means the following year, uh, the district will need to have a plan for about one point one million dollars of, of staffing that will need to either go into other funds, be absorbed in some fashion.
So the idea being for this reduction plan, um, we would be looking at, uh, a year one for next year, looking for a plan that would reduce, um, expenses, whether that, there could be any combination of ways, but for eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four, about, dollars. And then year two, next year, we would have, uh, the year two of the plan would be for the remaining one point one million of one-time funding for these staffing positions. Um, so we're thinking like a multi-year, two-year, and those would be the targets for reductions. Now, this gives us for year two next year, we're gonna have better budget information, and maybe we won't need to reduce by the entire one point one million next year, depending on how the legislature comes in and such, so this also gives us time to have more accurate financial information. But we know, we thought, um, we could come up with a two-year plan, knowing year two is, again, could be revised, revisited, but looking at that eight hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar figure for, for next year, so we'll be prepared to, um, be able to, you know, have a budget that is fiscally responsible related to this.
I, I, I really do appreciate it, because I, I know Candace has been talking about this in the abstract for the last couple of years, trying to get us ready to understand that this money's going away, and we've been using it for a lot of really important stuff, and, um, we have to build a budget that future recommends we don't have. So I, I, I really appreciate it, and I, you know, when I first came on the board, Brian was telling me that this is a problem we have in the future, so. It's something we need to get a plan for, and I do agree, it doesn't have to be the way, there's, we can look everything in the budget to figure out what we're gonna do, but we need to do that.
And I do want to, um, uh, assure everyone, we will be working in accordance, A, with Article fifteen of our collective bargaining agreement. I think it's Article nineteen in OSEA's bargaining agreement. We'll be working, obviously, with our union representatives, we'll be working closely with the administrative team to come up with a recommended plan to bring to the board to consider. Um, we've already, uh, started piecing together some criteria for priorities and strategies we can use when we're looking at this. criteria for priorities and strategies we can use when we're looking at this. So, and if the Board wants to give us any direction, always open to your thoughts and feedback around this process, but we have been reaching out to veteran superintendents that went through the massive cuts of over a decade ago, looking at the decision criteria they use when making cuts. Very hopeful that the kind of cuts that we experienced over a decade ago will be nothing like this. But I think there are some good lessons learned around how to prioritize what criteria to use when making this, and we also have a newly adopted strategic plan that can guide our priorities when looking at this. But I just wanted to assure you that we are, I've already notified the leadership of the unions that we'll be working on this jointly. This will be a collaborative process.
You, Karras, and any other discussion? All right, Dusty?
Aye.
Arnie?
Aye.
Adrian?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Was that our last one?
Can I add one more thing?
No.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, that was an automatic.
We got a regulation speaker for Marshfield High School, where we did not for Destination and Resource.
Oh, that's the one I actually wanted to do. I thought that's what I was signing up for.
Well, there you go.
I'll do that one.
No.
I did it last, but you can do it. You can do both of them.
Okay, if that's okay.
Different names.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
All right. That was it, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
So we're seven fourteen.
So I can't talk so long, drinking something, or my voice.
Eli, you spend as much time in the service I do.
Oh, yeah.